Nine oh five, we will begin this work session of the Lake County Board of County Commissioners. On the agenda today, we have budget overview for twenty twenty five.
Six.
Six.
No, we're redoing this year's.
Yeah. It's so much fun, we're gonna redo this year's.
Isn't that what you worked on? Because that's what we're expecting.
Yes, budget workshop and overview for twenty twenty six fiscal year.
Alright.
Led by Candace Ryan.
We can now, yeah.
We need to share.
Share. Oh, it's right here. Back.
Alright.
Let's go. Here we go, everybody.
This is our preliminary budget. Um, we do anticipate that we'll find more things that aren't perfect as we work uh to actually adopt it next week. Um, or for you guys to acknowledge it next week on our statutory deadline of the fifteenth.
Yeah, so October fifteenth, we have to have you as the governing body accept this preliminary budget. You'll see on the next slide, we have a little bit of a timeline. So we also have to make the preliminary budget open for public comment and inspection. We'll have a copy in the clerk and recorder's office, as well as we will post it online. And then we have a digital form as well for folks to access if they do want to provide that comment.
And then we'll continue working on the budget, refining things, budgeting, um. So we have to make a number of transfers on the accounting end, and Will and I'll work to budget all of those transfers. So when we take money from the general fund, I have to put it to another fund as sales tax revenues come in and go to where they actually are offsetting the cost. We'll spend the next few weeks really dialing in those transfers, so you'll see those in the final, but not in this. And that's just, we have to account for the movement of money between funds, not just the revenues and expenses. Um, so Will and I'll spend a lot of hours and time together figuring those out before December fifteenth. And then we'll also have the opportunity for you guys to um let our partners share what they would like. Um, so we often do community, but we give money to different community partners. Um, so we'll let you guys know how much extra money you have to put towards that. Um, so you can listen to people's presentations and determine what that will look like. So our timeline, October fourteenth, you'll acknowledge the receipt of the twenty twenty six preliminary budget, which is going to be posted online and available for public inspection at the clerk and recorder's office. October fifteenth pursuant to CRS twenty nine one one oh five, the budget has been submitted to the governing body and the statutory deadline has been met. November fourth, we'll have a twenty twenty six budget town hall at Freight, and we'll talk just a little bit about pieces of that event, um, and what that will look like. Uh, the end of this presentation, November twelfth, community partners meet with the B O C C to discuss twenty twenty six contribution requests. Um, mill levy scenarios will be presented for consideration at that time. Uh, we actually went ahead and modeled them now, just two months, three months, two months earlier than that happened last year. So we are excited to have that prepared, um, so you could be thinking about it before you show up again and have to start to make some decisions. Um, December second, B O C C votes on community contributions for the twenty twenty six budget. That'll be like the last piece we nail down in place. And then on December eleventh, you guys will be voting on the government mill levies. We'll certify the mills for taxing entities, so we certify the mills for everybody.
Okay.
Um, and then you'll adopt the twenty twenty six budget.
The statutory deadline to adopt is the fifteenth. Last year, we did it on the really fortunate day of December thirteenth, we were all there. Uh, unfortunately, we don't have December thirteenth on a Friday this year, so we did select the eleventh to work through all of that. And it gives us a tiny bit of buffer, just in case we don't have a bow on everything. But sticking to these deadlines are really gonna put us in a very, very good spot, where no one stays up till two A M.
Uh, can the mill levies go up or down like they did last year?
Yes, that, you have the agency to vote and decide on that.
There's a cap.
How much?
Four one nine 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 is the cap.
Is the highest, yeah.
So.
And so the second half of today's conversation is gonna be looking at mills, how those are broken down, what they fund, and to give y'all a little bit more context, so that you have a month to really think about what you wanna do when we do present the mill levy scenarios again.
And when we present them, we'll actually take more time to like really go in in depth with with questions you have about the mills, but we thought it would be nice to get them in front of you today, so that when we come to that meeting, it's not the first time you're seeing the different scenarios for mills.
If we make changes, drops, or increases on mills, when does that, what date do those actually go in effect? Is it January first, or?
Yeah, it'll be for the next property tax season, um, so you won't see the fruits of that until year by.
So just a few definitions to make sure you, you know, understand what what we're talking about when we look at some of these graphs, and then you have a line by line in your packet. I'll probably spend the very end of this explaining how to read the line by line, just so you guys understand what that document is, and you can take time to really run through that. I mean, there's thousands of lines, so I'm not gonna read everyone at you, because that'd be an exciting use of our time, but it is in your packet, so if you do come back and have questions, I wanna make sure you understand what you're reading in there. So we'll walk through that at the end together. Um, the general fund is the primary funding source for Lake County government. Its revenues come from property tax, sales tax, general fees, and charges. Non-general funds are financial resources that are designated for specific purposes outside of the general fund. Um, funds operate independently, and often uh funds have restricted revenue sources to ensure accountability and compliance with regulations. So a lot of, so there's a couple of different ways our funds get created. Um, some are statutory, so that's like the government tells us we have to create a fund, and then it uses parameters on how funds get put in there and what they can be spent on. We don't have a lot of control on changing those types of funds. We have some funds that uh we adopt to have where people before you have elected to really restrict those, or funds that are created within the community that are restricted for certain uses. And then there's kind of a lighter designation for funds that are, funds that we've put, you know, money aside because we voted on it in 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 a meeting previously, or you guys decide to create a fund. Um, and those can really be undone by us voting in a meeting to change how they're used, but what type of fund it is really determines how we can change what the fund is used for and dictate like which money can come in, and what money can go out for, and whether we can be spending that money before a certain time. So that's really what creates a fund. Um, creating tons of funds makes your accounting really challenging and messy. So we really only wanna create funds when they're really needed.
We have lots of funds.
We have lots of funds.
So we have thirty.
But sorry, guys.
Thirty one active funds that we're pushing money in and out of. And I think that one of the goals is, so I have a meeting called Fund Fund, uh, because we do wanna clean up our funds, we wanna make sure that we have kind of citations for all of them.
And why we have them.
Exactly.
Um, so types of funds that we have are enterprise funds, those are funds that actually um generate revenue. They kind of operate just like a normal business, they charge for services, and then they have expenses related to the services provided. Uh, grant funds and specific grants have to be tracked in our grant fund, especially our federal grants. Um, they help us create a document called the S I F A, that we turn in with our audit every year. We have intergovernmental funds. Um, and that's moving money um between funds. I, inner internal service funds, statutory funds, and those are the ones that are required. We've got our courthouse renovation fund, which we were really careful to create, because we have multiple funding streams. We could have just put this in capital, in the capital funds, but we recognize that this is a pretty big project, and it could get, like the southern fire station that did not get its own fund. When you don't have it set aside, sometimes the accounting can get pretty hairy, and we have a lot of reporting requirements related to that C O P.
And then send space on the hard drive.
Yeah, once we finish the renovation, we'll likely close out that fund, whatever that fiscal year is, but we recognize we could set ourselves up to have things not be handed off well, should anybody leave, if we don't kind of keep that separate. And then non-major governmental funds. Alright, so in our preliminary budget, all funds, um, our revenues are at thirty eight six, and expenses are at thirty seven seven nine one, which took a monumental effort last night. We recognize that we're not perfect, and we anticipate we've probably missed a thing or two. Um, just because there's a lot of expenses to remember, every I G A that has dollars tied to it, to make sure we model every payroll position. Um, so we anticipate we could have missed a thing or two, but we're gonna run through everything with a fine tooth comb for the next few weeks, making sure we didn't.
Seven hundred thousand is really close.
We really worked hard. So our general fund, you can see that um our revenues are the twenty 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 two two five four six one seven. Expenses are twenty one two hundred four five one. Um, we really held people pretty tightly on their budgets and didn't give a lot of wiggle room for anything. Um, all other funds are um revenues of sixteen three four five eight four four, expenses of sixteen five ninety seven nine seven. So I wanna talk just a little bit about the organization of our offices and departments, um, because we're gonna present, you know, general fund revenues and expenses in certain buckets of expenses that I think help, help us understand where we're spending our money, and then also break it out by these different groups to help you guys have kind of a bigger picture of how, where we're spending money and what it's being used for. Um, elected offices, this is gonna be you guys, assessors, clerk and recorder, the coroner, the D A's office, who will be presenting this afternoon, um, the sheriff's office, and the treasurer. We have our administrative groups, that'd be county attorney, county manager, finance, H R, and all of operations. So that's gonna be our comms, I T, um, our um executive staff, um, what else is announced?
Fleet and facilities.
Fleet and facilities, thank you. Uh, Breck and Culture, um, so that'd be C S U Extension, the library, Parks and Recreation, TED, um, or Tourism and Economic Development, Natural Resources Management, so that'd be our water. And we had an open space position that we've moved over here for this next year to help kind of manage, you know, a lot of the contracts and grants related to um fire mitigation, co-swap grant, we have a lot of grants that we really wanna be making to re-manage those well within that department. Um, public safety, E nine one one, the animal shelter, O E M, fire rescue, and then S R. Health and Human Services, that's gonna be human services, public health, um, senior center, and our veteran services. Community Development, um, airport, community planning and development, C P D, and then public works, art landfill, and recycling center, and road and bridge. So this is a little different than how we had people broken out for our budget book last year, so we'll be updating this year's budget book to kind of reflect these things. Alright, so we'll take just a minute to talk about, when we talk about revenues, that's money coming in. We're gonna talk about kind of big buckets where we're gonna show how much we're bringing in related to taxes, so that'd be sales and property tax. Um, I was really, really cautious with our sales tax, um, to not over project it, even though it's grown for the last few years, we held it pretty tight, because we, the economy, we just don't know what's gonna happen at this juncture. Grants, um, funding provided by external organizations, individuals, and institutions. Um, so that would be revenues we budgeted coming in. Um, we also were really diligent to budget on the expense side, um, any matches that we have for grants, any uh expenses related to grants that then we would be getting reimbursed. And historically, we have not always captured the grants in that kind of way, but we really held people to the line of understanding revenues and expenses related to grants. Um, other revenues are um our regular revenues that are for special events, licenses, building permits, charges for services, fees, and fines. Alright, so we're gonna talk about um our revenues for each of those buckets, and then I'll run through what we, what our expenses are. Um, so elected offices, um, they bring in all of our sales tax and property tax. It doesn't mean they all get spent here, um, we have to pay money to the ambulance, that's part of our mill. Um, so that money will be, when we talk about transfers, that money, when it comes in, is it, is automatically transferred out to the ambulance as an expense for us. Um, but all of those come into Patrick. Um, we've got other revenues, those are charges for services, that's around three million dollars. And then you can see that our grants for our elected officials makes up this amount right here.
I've heard several times, especially from like the previous administration here, that we have traditionally under, undervalued our charges for fees and services. Is that still kind of the general sentiment?
Well, I can't do a lot about what our elected offices charge. I do feel that an audit of all of the things we charge for within departments is a big thing that I would like to spend some time on this next year with staff, is to say, what are we charging? What are other counties charging? Are we charging enough? If we're charging for a facility rental, is it actually enough to maintain part of the facility? Or offset the wear and tear? So we, we do recognize that, yeah, some of the places where we charge, we probably aren't charging enough, because it takes time to really audit those things, and ask yourself, and look at other examples of, hey, what, what makes sense for us? So that is a really big area that I'd like to audit each of our departments and what they're charging.
That was one of the triggers given to all staff when we sent out the budget message with guidance and directions for twenty twenty six back in either June or July, was that we really did wanna look at what we're charging for services, fines, and fees that really run the gamut of the different departments that we have. So Candace is gonna engage in that work over the first and the second quarter. So we should see maybe some different numbers when we do comparable for the service in other communities.
Yeah.
The other thing that I do wanna mention is that sixteen right there, that is coming in through Patrick with property tax and sales tax, and that's what really is the backbone that supports every office and every department at the county. So Patrick is a very hardworking dude, but he shares those across the board.
Yeah. So these don't just offset their expenses, this is kind of our whole general fund right here.
The, the other revenue versus the grants, like how much of that is like state block grants? Because that seems like a really low, or just any other funding that comes from the state or the federal government, that just seems like a really low amount for offices.
But that's just for elected.
Yeah. Well, like Heath, Heath has that, Heath, wouldn't search and rescue be under that?
No, so.
And.
Search and rescue is a.
It's a different fund, even though there's statutory volunteers under the sheriff's office.
So you will see them in public safety, we do call them out. But you're right, there's, there is some, uh, there's like sixty K in grant funding in there, which you'll see a little bit later on. The clerk and recorder's office does have some of the election grants, but it's, when you put it with the whole omnibus set of elected officials, it's pretty small. It looks like that.
And Heath has grants for positions, so even though those positions aren't filled, is that in there?
Yeah, that's what those are.
It's just, those seem so tiny, like it would be great if they were leveraging more grand dollars, is what I'm saying. Not saying that you're missing something, I'm saying, wow, that seems really tiny for elected officials to be leveraging grants.
Yes, so one thing is that when Will and I work with each office and department, we incredibly conservatively.
Budgeted revenues from grants.
Budgeting revenues. So I don't want to, um, so I wanna set your expectation with that. This is probably what we're gonna get, it could look different. And again, like Candace said, we really have until December fifteenth to adopt our budget. This is our baseline to start, we know where we're at. And this is when we do find tooth comb, ask the questions, wiggle those numbers a little bit to the left and right, where we really think they're gonna hit.
We were super conservative with grant revenues, because every week or so, we find out whether we really get those or not. And when we go big on over projecting revenues, which historically we've done, uh, then we just set ourselves up for failure. I'd rather be really conservative on revenues than be like, where'd you get all this stuff? And then we don't, and then we have to scramble to find it. So we, we did really hold people to like, if you have a grant, let's, what is the most conservative amount you think you'll bring in for real, not what your hopes and dreams are.
We don't wanna budget revenues on what we hope we get. And looking at grants, treasurer doesn't get grants, D A doesn't get grants, coroner doesn't get grants, assessor doesn't get grants. So you only really have two departments in that, excuse me, offices in that bucket.
Yeah.
Receiving grant revenue.
Yeah.
Doesn't get grants yet, excuse me.
That's what I mean. That's what I'm saying, is that it would be great if they were leveraging more grants.
Alright, so Breck and Culture, that's gonna be C S U Extension, the library, Parks and Rec, Tourism and Economic Development, and then our Natural Resources area. So their taxes are two thirty three, two thirty, revenues that they bring in. Um, you can see that we bring in a significant amount of grants. Um, and then other revenues, so that's what we're charging, you know, for services in each of these areas. Um, we do hope to really refine that number and ask ourselves, are we charging what we need to charge for things? Um, because while this is a good amount of revenues to be bringing in, it is not nearly as much as the expenses in this area, which is fine, since these things are covered in, you know, for general fund dollars, but we really do wanna be asking ourselves, are we doing enough here? Um, I will say that we will continue to explore grant opportunities, but grants, they're few and far between right now for things that are not all statutory. So that's been a really big challenge. Public safety, so E nine one one authority, I wanna be really clear, because E nine one one um is under the sheriff. They um, they have a little bit of a different funding mechanism. They are what is called a, some of the child entity for us. Um, they used to be separate from the county, and then they came into being under the county's audit. Um, so they do have some other funding streams and a board, um, that we don't capture on our side. They're really managed by that board, and they have other groups paying into their services. So like the hospital contributes, and those don't get captured on our side, they'll be actual transfer in from those entities to pay for some of their services.
And this is not capturing any, is this capturing any revenue from?
We.
Water, or animal shelter, excuse me, animal shelter. Remember how you were asking, how can we be accounting for revenue as we're talking?
It does, because we've, we made them put it in the budget this next year.
Thank you.
So yes.
Great.
We budgeted it off of the budget that just came out this year, like their prelim, until it gets adopted by those boards.
I don't know if we have been able to actually include that yet, since it seemed like a hard thing for them to figure out.
Alright, so our grants, then all of our other revenue. And that other revenue, like that's money coming in from E nine one one.
I don't know how many current revenue numbers that the payments are.
Don't worry.
So there's a surcharge for like um telephone use, and that's the major funding source for E nine one one.
I've seen that on, I think cellphone bills.
Exactly.
Yeah.
You get charged for.
If you look at breakdowns of your cellphone bills, there's a nine one ones, we charge you some.
Yeah.
Oh, it's for everybody.
Yep.
It's like everybody's paying a fee.
Yeah, it's like a fee, you have to pay each bill, like twelve cents or something.
Exactly.
Interesting.
That's cool.
Alright, other revenues, Health and Human Services. So Health and Human Services um gets its own mill, and that mill is to cover, that's what this number is right here, is the mill number, um. And they get a portion of sales tax, but they get a mill number, or a mill directly, and that mill is offsetting the difference between their revenues that they bring in from the state and their actual costs. They don't get enough reimbursement from the state to fully cover their cost, and so they directly get a mill um to cover the rest of their costs. They're not in our general fund, they're, they're statutory funds, so they're, they have to kind of be set aside separately then.
To help me understand that a little better, is there federal money that goes through the state that ends up in, okay?
And D A just, yeah, and we have to track that against, so they get different allocations for different types of services. And they have to actually record the expense against really specific criteria.
That sounds complex.
It is, which, and that's partially why they are in their own, they have their own mill.
Bucket.
Um, they get um grants, I will say, the public health, and it seems like they're down about four hundred thousand in grants. We were very conservative, and we did ask Kelsey to identify anything she had lost, and if she felt that something could be lost, not count grant, grant dollars that we felt
Might be in jeopardy.
probably would not come to us.
Was the majority of the drop in grants due to the instability at federal and state levels?
Yeah, a lot, we lost a lot of the COVID funding we had had before for vaccines, et cetera, and the services, and the, the, the people actually providing those services, we lost a lot of those grand dollars this year.
The COVID gravy train is crazy.
Um, other revenues, that's charges for services for them. Asses, sorry. C P D. So they get a teeny tiny bit of uh taxes there, and then they get uh some grants. Um, and then their other revenues are charges for services. This is definitely an area where we wanna start paying attention to, or what are we charging for permits? And does it make sense, is it offsetting the cost of the qualified human that would have to be here to issue the, the permit, and their time, et cetera? So this is definitely an area where I think we wanna sit down and, and, and run through, what are we charging with a fine tooth comb, um, and, and dial in some processes and procedures. Um, airport is also in this pocket. I will say that Josh doesn't have as many grants for the next year as he did previously, but we are gonna be looking for grants to invest in our fuel farm, um, and getting those fuel lines either buried or up higher, so they're not on the ground, which is not necessarily the safest when you're in a.
Standard best practice.
So there's a fuel farm, I've never heard that before.
It's just their, um, just like at the gas station, where you pull in all of the little units.
Yeah. For the gas unit, yeah.
Looks like a bunch of oversized yard bombs.
I don't know, we were like growing bio material from this.
No, no farm, no overalls and pitchboards.
We are. We organically harvest it, it's made by the sun, because we're so close to it.
If you drive any really old cars, the one hundred A V gas is awesome.
Alright, over.
Candace, will we have any say in raising permit fees for construction?
I can do a work session on it, I think we just need some time to analyze, what are we doing? What is best practice? And then propose, you know, new, new rates, and I think we would just present all of that information and just get a feel for like, does this overall package seem like it makes it?
I think it's just gonna take a lot of time to look at what neighboring communities are doing, and what's working and what's not.
A, a year ago, or two years ago, C P D did do a fee schedule study. So they do have a plan to implement a change in fees, and they wanna do it scaffolding. So instead of being like tomorrow, it's a thousand dollars.
And this year.
Exactly. So Candace and Anne can have that discussion about how to best present that and move through it, but uh some of the work has already been done.
Okay, um.
Matt gets extra fees.
Hitting pause.
Whole section on that.
Matt's like, drop them all.
It's hard to get these projects over the start line, hard enough, and then when you start, your permit fees are now six thousand typically for a million dollar house, and they used to be twenty five hundred. It seems like a drop in the bucket, but it's a death by a thousand cuts, you know?
I think that's why we wanna look at fee schedules, what's appropriate, but also having good and clear processes. So sure, you're gonna pay for that, but you're not gonna be held up. good and clear processes, so sure, you're gonna pay for that, but you're not gonna be held up forever, that we can try to really start to get that down, and it's gonna take a while, because we've done the same thing for a long time, I think, so.
Yeah. Yeah. Not to go too off track, but we s- we pay uh Chum's code of well over a million dollars a year.
I think it's also a question of, can we also find the the correct individuals?
With the knowledge.
Yeah, and and pay them what we have to pay them to be here, so that's.
And keep them.
Yeah, so I do think that's.
Professional engineers are really valuable, right? Cause they can put that stamp on them, and it's really hard to recruit and retain that type of intellectual capital.
Well, the, all the plans are stamped within the hit the building department, so you're not necessarily supposed to be reviewed by another engineer.
I don't know nothing about that.
And.
I will look into it, thank you.
Yeah.
Alright, so public works, road bridge.
Sorry.
You're okay. And taxes, and then we've got other revenues. We've talked about the landfill quite a bit, and making sure that we work towards um getting this scale and some other opportunities to really dial in what we're charging.
So a big part of that other revenue is pilt, payment in lieu of taxes?
Yeah.
Just uh, I was like, is payment in lieu of taxes taxes? It's not taxes, but so, I like really struggled with the right way to um describe that revenue source.
In lieu of taxes.
Yeah.
Alright, so now we're gonna talk about our expense categories. Um we really tried to dial this in, I don't know if you remember last year, but last year it's like other.
There's so much other, so much other.
That feels great. So we've really tried to put things into categories that make sense and get rid of the other. Where appropriate. So personnel would be wages, holiday pay, um employee wellness programs, and other incentives. Um services, telephone, utilities, legal notices, maintenance agreements, repairs, day-to-day operations, training and education, and then supplies, this is like office and operating supplies. Alright, so elective offices, um we've got their breakout of personnel, we've got their supplies line, and then services, I will say for the most part, we keep our supplies in check. People are, we share a lot of resources here and don't go overboard.
We just use that sticky note over.
Yeah, one of those sides that they keep sticking.
At parades, we take everybody else's pens.
And back out again.
Well, it's kind of interesting, when I first came on, people had just finished writing over the paper.
Oh, the great paper wars, yeah.
Yeah.
Wish.
Still in effect, they just gone underground.
I don't know, I think we just got better at sharing.
Black market reams is.
Racking and culture.
And the ink, my god, I had no idea.
Oh, printer ink is rowdy.
So printer ink is actually included in our R I N S contract with Peak uh Peak Printer Performance, all these pieces live together.
Alright, you guys just have printer we um.
Yeah, that's what I mean, yeah, that's what I'm saying. Our printer costs a lot of money.
It does.
Ink.
The rest of us have a contract, so they service it with paper ink, cause we realized at some point we're spending more on printers than it was worth owning them. Alright, personnel for racket culture.
It's a rocket.
It is.
Cause we're paying retail, and somebody getting wholesale just comes in and other cuts our retail by a little bit, and makes.
So we worked really hard with Peak to, so to get it, so Peak was like the middle person, and they were leasing from Marlin. And so now we actually have refurbished machines from Peak versus going through Marlin, like the big service, and that has really changed our cost. So there's different versions of like lease-to-out, but honestly, printer maintenance is the vein of everyone's experience. Uh this is the best possible choice to go through something like that. There are other vendors that we can look and explore, but the service we've received through Peak is fantastic, in my opinion.
I've worked professionally on a printer that you can't find anyone to service, because it's a six-foot wide machine.
You showed me, and I'd like that in my house, thank you. I got something to print.
Yeah.
For free.
Alright, so this is racket culture. So we've got our personnel, we've got services, and then supplies. Um so our parks and rec and goal. Um their staff are in here, so that's all of our part-time staff, and that's one area that I really want to work on auditing this year, is to say, hey, how many part-time people do we need, because we utilize a lot of kiddos? We end up having tons and tons of people, and just want to be really intentional that if we're utilizing part-time staff for those recreation activities, that we have a a really good idea of like, hey, what is our programming, how many people do we really need, and what does that look like to really make sure things are covered without having too too many part-time staff? And so I don't know if we have too many, I feels like a lot, but I realize some of those people who work a little bit, but we really want to re-audit, like, what is our programming? How many people are working at a time, and what are the activities they're doing? And is there an opportunity to to really streamline some of those things? That definitely is an area that I'll be looking at this next year.
Which will open up space for other things.
Yeah, I think we just need to understand all of our programming, from rec to goal to um our summer camps, other staff, what we're doing with our pathways program. We're really just looking at every program and saying, okay, what's the best use of people? Are there times when rec staff are slow, but they could help out with goal programming? Are there times when goal staff are slow, that they could assist with rec programming? And so that's one of our biggest areas, is to ask ourselves, if we have nineteen people, are we all very busy as at the same time? If not, how can we be really good partners and and help one another across that? Public safety, so their personnel costs are in the yellow. Their services, they're, they have a lot of um different costs, like the radios that live under E nine one one and the emergency alert systems equipment. Um those items can be pretty expensive, and they are captured within here. O E M has some emergency equipment that we're required to have, fire and rescue certainly does. Um so um and I just took the fire budget that we have not voted on, that was proposed, and put it in here. So do you know that full amount is in there? I don't know where that'll shake out, but I thought budget for the worst, hope for the best. Um especially in terms of expenses. And then we've got SAR in there, and SAR, they are actually uh have their own five oh one C three, so they're able to apply for grants that are not under us. So this doesn't mean this is all of SAR's funding, but because they operate as a five oh one C three, they can be getting other grants. Um and the way that the county supports them is sometimes we're we're helping provide, they get a certain amount of money from us every year. So sometimes they'll use the money they get from us to be the match to their grant. Um but they they do operate, they have some expenses and and revenues that do never touch our books.
So from my understanding, like, I don't know where the divide is, but like non-governmental nonprofits have access to way more grants than government entities?
Mm-hmm.
So by them having that, is that classify them as like a non-governmental nonprofit technically? Even though they're kind of a.
Their five oh one C three is non-governmental, they're separate, five oh one C three that they have.
Okay, cool. So they've got the whole.
And they're kind of unique because of their statutory operations related to to sheriff.
And they're only ours, so government, when they're under the direction of the chief's, or Sheriff Spackman.
Yes. So if they're doing their own separate thing for a contract?
Well, our interns isn't covering them.
When they're not operating under us.
So Sheriff Spackman has to be like, hey guys, circle up for them to be county volunteers to be covered.
Well, I mean, it's good, because if they're out operating outside of like our direction, we we don't wanna be covering those sorts of activities.
So when they're having their once-a-month meeting, they're the nonprofit. When they get called in to go up Mount Massive to get someone, then they are county statutory volunteers directed by the sheriff.
In which case they are covered.
Correct.
Yeah, got it. But if they slip and fall at their meeting.
Well, they're on county property, so we'll see. We have insurance for them.
Alright, health and human services, um this is their personnel costs. They have a lot of unfunded mandates, so their people are really, really, really covering a lot of things. Um services, and actually a lot of these are offset for D H S. Some for public health, but not as much with the loss of our our grants and our our cuts and um like our SNAP benefits, uh and those sorts of things. Um our services, and then our supplies are pretty small there.
Does public health bring in any money?
Mm-hmm.
I do.
We do. Charge for some of their services, but it's usually like a discounted rate to go into like a normal medical position.
And they get reimbursed through insurance?
Yeah.
What's that?
They get, they'll get reimbursed through insurance if you have it, or they don't want you to get shots.
Yeah. This morning.
There's a.
Public health is doing that, your clinic?
Oh, yeah, I saw that on the schedule.
Alright, community development, airport, community planning and development, so we've got personnel costs, we've got services, and then we've got their supplies. That works. Actually, for recycling center in Roadbridge. Um we've got their personnel costs, we've got their services, and then of course their supplies is gonna be quite a bit larger, so when we talk about supplies, we're talking about like road base for paving, um all of the materials, they need to be repairing buildings. Excuse me, that's not true, sorry, this changed. Um the landfill, all of their supplies, um any trucks, items like that that we're purchasing for them. So their their supply line is is pretty large, just because the nature of the things we're purchasing for them.
I would. I would honestly expect it to be bigger.
Yes, and.
Um where is the fleet gonna live?
Thank you for asking, please hold that thought until we get to the mills.
Okay.
We did budget it.
Oh, whoa, how'd you call that?
What?
We're very excited to say that we've, we've, the fleet is in the bucket.
Wow, look at us growing up.
Alright, so we're we're gonna talk about mills. Um I'm gonna let Liz explain this idea, she really loves this graphic, cause I think she hasn't understood mills very well until this.
No, I really struggled, I'm like, mill, number, calculation, Excel does, I tell you this. But then when I really started to think about what a mill is, it's a thousand dollars for every piece, for for the total amount of property tax that we have, you get forty dollars for each thousand dollars within that total bundle of property tax.
Mm-hmm.
And so right now, we're looking at uh a little over three million in property tax, is what Mark has put in. So for that three million, I'm not doing a good job explaining it, look at the picture, it makes sense. I just look at the picture, I'm like, oh, yeah.
So mills can be really confusing, and we will walk through scenarios with you, so you can see the breakout, but we're not asking you to do that math in your head.
I'm sorry, you're just saying that forty mills equals forty dollars to a thousand, every mill is a, is one dollar to every thousand? So if you had a thousand mills, it would be a thousand dollars.
For every, um for the total amount of the assessed property tax value?
Can I get that, go back, let's just make sure we get this, so, sorry. Thousand, say your house is a thousand dollars, if we had a thousand mills, if you were charged a thousand mills, you would have to pay a thousand dollars.
Correct, yes, times the total assessed value.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm really proud that I kind of understood this.
You totally, yeah, yeah, that's awesome.
Alright, so we've got some mill levy scenarios.
My, my math is a nightmare.
Forty dollars for every thousand dollars that your house is worth.
Well, no, I'm going off of if Mark said three million.
Yeah, where is that?
Here. Three hundred. Three, this is one.
That's a different number.
And so this may not be the final number, this is the one that we submitted in um September, but uh.
We have to.
So not off of the revenue, off the valuation.
Thank you.
That's the total value of our community.
Yes.
That changes, that adds an extra zero.
It's three hundred seventy-four million.
Lower.
That, yeah, the assessment.
The one that says mill with an arrow, that was our previous years, so we have gone down in assessment value, and this number is not concrete yet. Assessor Wadsworth may have some wiggle left and right, but he said this is pretty darn close.
That's crazy that we've gone down in when everything seems like it's.
So I think just like in all systems, all processes and all practices, the county is doing a really good job of cleanup. And I think that you've seen Assessor Wadsworth frazzled, walking around, breaking the slushy, changing stuff.
He's always calm and collected.
That is correct, that's what I see in my head when I think of him. But he's done a really good job of reviewing it, changing it, shifting, training his staff, so I think that's what we're seeing is more accurate. He can't explain it better than I can.
Yeah.
But he's mentioned things like Agland getting a different assessment, so now that we have a clearer understanding.
I see.
Across the board in the county, you're gonna see tighter numbers that are more reflective of what's actually going on.
Okay, I'm only seeing it through like the Board of Equalization lens, where it's like everyone's upset that their houses' values are going up.
Oh. Yes, but uh two years ago, C B O E was wild, we maybe had sixty people show up. Like, we had back-to-back, non-stop hearings, so.
Mm-hmm. Oh, that.
It's better.
Alright, so mill scenarios, and this is what we built the current budget off of.
Three sixty-two.
Is that the general fund gets this nine point eight one six million. Our human services fund, this is the amount that we recognize they they won't likely be able to cover with their allocations, and they get us their own specific mill to cover that. Our insurance fund, um I would say sadly our insurance has increased, um but not necessarily because our rates have increased that much, but because we actually have truly insured ourselves. Uh cat back, this is where the fleet is, so we've got the fleet in here. Um plus, we had another around like one one hundred and fifty thousand that we put in capital acquisition to put towards other um other projects or purchases. We have not typically done a great job of budgeting things in our cat back fund, but we wanted to give ourselves room to take on projects, or if we have to, you know, do roofs or whatever we we come across. Um and we wanted to make sure that we did fully cover the fleet, which didn't make it in there last year. Um we are gonna be really analyzing the fleet this year to ask ourselves, at what time do we need to be rolling over each vehicle, and so we have Stuart working on that. We've got our mine closure fund, and this is what we put in last year and for the last several years. We've got our ambulance fund, and this is um a statutory amount that we put towards it, so that we are our total there. I'm gonna show you other scenarios that we have. So if we build higher, this gives you a little more discretionary funds to spend. Still, our general fund gets a little bit more, but none of these set amounts change, cause a lot of these are set. Oop, and then there's forty-one.
Forty-one nine is our cap?
Yeah, which we didn't even model, we don't, but we can if you want to. I think we did forty-one and a half is where we stopped, which just tells you how much extra discretionary money, how much higher your general fund is. Forty-one five, discretionary funds. And then you can do forty-one point nine nine, we didn't model it, but we can model it for you, if you would like us to.
Can you go back to the beginning? And is this the one that you actually modeled the budget off of?
This, this is what we built our budget off of.
Okay, thank you.
The lowest, but you guys can really do whatever you want, you just have to ask yourself, do we wanna put more towards other projects, and that that really is the question.
That's crazy that we can just tax it or without asking you to vote, you're, it going to a vote?
Well, it's been voted for at the cap. So we're actually existing and have been existing below the cap. And the cap is what the voters have already approved.
Yeah.
So.
They vote on the top that we can mill at, which is forty-one point nine nine.
Interesting.
We're, we're at forty point five right now?
We're at thirty-eight point nine.
Thirty-eight?
Thirty-nine point five.
Yeah.
And that was raised already last year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I thought we didn't have as much room as we did, that's pretty wild.
We've really tried to dial in our expenses, and we're gonna continue to work on that. We also were super conservative with our revenues, because a lot of the grants we have operated off of in the past, it's just not likely that they're, they might continue through twenty-six, but it's not likely that a lot of them will continue to be available. So we really try to be very tight and tidy and not count count wishes and dreams in our revenues.
Well, I appreciate that approach a lot. Gives me a little less anxiety.
Alright, so I wanna talk to you guys just a little bit about the Mine Closure Fund. Um, so, this is the economic plan that's integrated into our annual budgeting for Climax line. Um, one of the intentions of the Healthy Community Fund is to create a Mine Closure Fund. This is to sustain the county activities after the valuation of the county declines. So this is what the fund is at right now, we're gonna put a hundred thousand more dollars into it, um.
So this is the resolution that established it, this did go to the vote, y'all saw this in April. Nothing has changed on this slide, but this is the only direction the resolution gives us for the Mine Closure Fund. So, to help sustain us after the mine value declines. And I know this has been a continual conversation, and it's stuff that all of us are really starting to think about. How do we actually make a sustainable economic plan? I think that we can all agree, maybe a hundred thousand dollars annually is not, is not gonna take care of that. So I know this is at the forefront of Candace's mind, Matt's mind, my mind as a community member. How are we gonna take care of the people who live here, um, when we are not subsidizing our, our General Fund? From this, um,
Revenue stream.
Revenue stream in our county.
Um, so I think there are a couple of things to think about, A, how much should we be putting back in the future? How, what other opportunities do we have to invest in that would become revenue generators in an area where we know what's generating our revenue could go away in the future? So I think that's the other question is, is the answer to put more in the Mine Closure Fund, is it too invested in other economic opportunities that would continue to create revenue into the future? And those are the, the questions that you guys have to, you know, be, be thinking about and and asking as we think about, okay, what do we put money towards?
That is currently not in an interest-bearing account.
I have not gotten that information from Patrick, so I.
Does that collect card with the interest?
Yeah.
More than a hundred thousand a year, that's for sure.
So, this is from Mark, I wish he was here to give a little bit better explanation, I wanna make sure you have the information, but this is just showing you the taxes paid by Climax. So here's twenty-four, this is projected for twenty-five, so you can see that their mining proceeds have gone down. Um, says the county's position is estimated to be fifty percent of that total, and the county represents fifty percent of the total mills in Climax's tax area. Um, the anticipated tax revenue loss from our year is two million dollars. Um, so I, that's all the information I really have here, because I don't create this, so I would love when Mark is back to be able to ask, do we have any reason why this dropped, to help us understand, I, I feel like numbers are great to have, but if you don't understand the why behind the numbers, um, it's a little challenging, so I would love to see when he's back, he can walk us through maybe the why.
And or ask Climax.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, we talked about all the extracovid funds that they got to use, and then you look at twenty-twenty-one, the drop, massive drop, twenty and twenty-one, the massive drop of production up at Climax due to closures, probably almost offsets some of that, huh?
Well, probably. But I don't know, I don't know enough from them.
Yeah.
Fully answered, right, yeah, it does look like that's probably when it shut down for COVID.
Well, they, they actually, mm, no, based on our conversations with Climax, they, we see the twenty-twenty COVID production taxes in like twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four. Because of their reporting valuation and then actual payout. So twenty-twenty Climax taxes paid does not reflect twenty-twenty production, nor does twenty-twenty-one taxes paid reflect twenty-twenty production.
It's not even the previous year, you're saying it was like two or three years.
Yeah, so when we had that walkthrough with Climax, they were like, yeah, y'all are actually spending COVID production dollars this year.
Gotcha.
So, anyway, the Climax, knowing how much they're valuing today will actually help us, and producing today will actually help us project for what we can get in three to five years. Like, we can actually see further out with Climax and our
I might ask Mark if he can work on modeling that out for a few years. I bet he can, so I'll ask him about that, cause he did create this table. And it didn't have formulas in there, so I I couldn't build off of his work without his.
We also talked about, when we looked at twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five? Twenty-twenty-four, they spent a huge amount of money on, so, sorry, what we will be getting, they spent a huge amount of money two years ago on some equipment.
Yeah.
So their capital expense was massive, and that seemed to offset a lot of their, a lot of their dollars for what their total was. So just saying, they're, just saying, I think there's a lot more to be said in that fund than what we're looking at.
Alright, so we're gonna talk about priorities, and we did not list everything on that wall for, for sake of space. So, responsibilities and priorities that we have, we've got statutory responsibilities, provisions of jails, noxious weeds, good during your, um, in your budget, and the budget is worth, actually just paid for them. Um, you can have the work happen this summer, uh, conduct elections, so our, uh, Clerks Office, establish public health agencies, establishment of Human Service Department, property taxes assessment and collection, recording of the documents, uh, surveying county properties and the management of county finances. Um, and then priorities with better the housing and policy, support the economic development and infrastructure, um, um, recreation, community wealth being, which really ties to the public health and human services, uh, operational efficiency, which is management of county finances, and also the property taxes and collections. Um, so we can see, we've got a lot of, we've got a lot of the things listed under each of those here. Um, I do think as money is more challenging, we really have to ask ourselves, how do we cover all of these things, and then also find room for the things that are just important to our community, um, that are outside of these, and I think that's where it gets, we get to really have to ask ourselves, if we wanna mill low, um, what do we cover? Cause there is a trade-off. You know, things we have to do, things we'd like to do, um, things that are important to who we are culturally and what our community values, and so I do think there, there's a lot of, a lot, a lot of the budget is determining where, where do you prioritize, but where do you put your dollars? So, I, I think those are conversations as we, as we think about, okay, well, if we need to have other opportunities to cover the revenue loss from the mine, what does that look like and what do we invest in? And I would like to say, I really am gonna try to, when we, when we, I think what has happened in the past is we get cool things brought up, right, and they're exciting to talk about, or just opportunities we wanna explore, um, to circle back to, okay, where does that fit within the budget we have, where we select? Um, I, it, it feels like, I'm pretty new here, in the past, we made really exciting decisions in meetings without circling back to the full picture of how much do we actually have, or can we allocate? And so trying to make decisions within the context of the bigger picture, I think it's important for you guys to circle back and do.
Yep.
Because saying yes somewhere, saying no somewhere else. And, and so, I, I do think as we approve budgets or things come up in front of you for the next year, we do have to circle back to, okay, here's what we budgeted for, where does that fit in here? So I think those are important to do. Um, so what's next? I'm gonna run by the line by line, run through the line by line with you, just so you, if you have questions about how to read it, you can ask those. Um, what will be happening for the next days?
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
It's gonna feel like a day, it's gonna be so interesting though.
It's four days.
Yeah, over two.
Over two weeks, yeah.
Yeah.
Spun some wrong side.
You know. Broken arm. Um, officers and departments are gonna share their, the good work they've been doing, their hopes, their dreams for their departments, and also their goals. Um, a lot of people will be reflecting on their budget book goals that they had from last year, and talking about how were they, how did they accomplish those, did they refine any goals? Um, and this will actually start to create, if you look at our current budget book, we have each department listed and then their short-term and long-term goals. And so we wanna be looking back at what did we do, what did we not do, what do we need to change, what do we need to reprioritize? Um, and so people will be sharing where they're at right now with those. Um, and then we, do you remember the day you scheduled it? I'm so sorry, audio on supply. Uh, we have a day scheduled for you guys to start to identify and affirm what the priorities are, cause those will re, reshape our new budget book. Um, we'll have our Budget Town Hall, and I wanna talk about just what we, what we have lightly planned for that, and we'll be, um, defining that plan a little bit better. We'll do a guided tour of the budget, myself. Um, interactive individual budget exploration station, so we'd like to have a couple of tablets, computers set up where we have in, interactive graphs that people can actually be clicking through and taking a look at, so they can ask some good questions about it. Um, we'll have budget comment stations, so we can be collecting feedback from people who are attending the Budget Town Hall. Um, for people who bring their kiddos, who might not be as excited about the budget as we are, we'll have county seal coloring stations around so that they have something fun to be doing. And then we'll have staff, um, yourselves, us, uh, available to be answering questions, to help people walk through things, uh, and, and give a little bit more context and information. So if people are looking at something and don't understand it, they can actually ask us questions about it. So that's kind of the next, next couple of weeks, based on that, you know, that first timeline that we gave you of our statutory requirements, and then trying to give opportunities for people to give feedback.
So we plan on doing advertising, pairing the Budget Town Hall, along with the preliminary budget and comments together, it's like one orchestrated piece. And we expect those to start going out next week, uh, we wanted to go ahead and put that in the newspaper.
Yeah.
And then we'll use all of our other channels to let all of the cool people know, Will. Well, tell me I could put really cool people on the presentation, so I put rough people. He has a problem with cool people, apparently.
No, just the realish.
He doesn't like double superlatives, but I'm, I'm definitely good at it.
Alright, so I'm gonna.
I'm definitely.
We should, um.
We see this here, can you put that on the screen?
Yeah.
We should. When is the town hall starting?
November fourth, at the front. And we did request the bar.
Sorry, I'm trying to. It won't let me es- escape my presentation.
We should, we should really look at finished products from the county seal coloring stations,
Yes.
and adopt some of those like for special months.
That actually is pretty neat.
Sir, have you seen my Halloween county seals?
Alright.
They're amazing, so I did wanna tell you so.
Here, where is it? Where is it?
I was gonna put it on there, but I didn't have time to finish up with the background. But I have a pumpkin head county seal, I have a witch county seal, and I have a ghost county seal, they're adorable.
Awesome.
If you come to Trick or Treat Street, the greatest of the Parks and Run events, you may get a limited edition sticker.
Okay.
She tried to work on a lady minor seal, but.
She's close, she looks really weird, right?
She looked really terrible.
The shoulders were quite raw for a woman, so we're, we'll work on that. Um, so here's our line by line. So I wanna, I'm gonna start at the end just to help you, um.
Well, did you leave out the last page that has what each fund is?
I think we did.
I'll, I'll go back and put it in here.
No, that'd be the income statement.
Oh, I wanna print that out. I'm gonna add, um, I'll, I'll add a sheet for you guys, I think it's nice to be able to see like this one thousand one, that's the General Fund, so just give you guys a key.
Thank you.
Um, these are in order by revenues, so those are our, our four and five thousand level accounts first. And then expenses are like the seven, six, seven, eights, just so you, you understand how the accounting codes work. But this is kind of what's budgeted for, for each line item in our budget, it's why we don't present the whole line by line to you guys, because it's a lot. Um, so within the General Fund, we've got different divisions. Right, so zero, zero, one, that's you guys. We've got myself in your budget, so mine has this little point one-six appendix. And so our accounting codes each kind of tell you what fund are you looking at, whose department is it, and then within that department, what subcategory are they? And then like all pro services, so that's seven, one, oh, five, oh. All pro services has that account code, so even if I go to another fund, right, so say I go to, I'm gonna get us out with the one thousand one, which is General Fund. Okay, so, sorry, there we go, so one thousand two. So even if I go to another fund, they're still gonna have their own individual codes, and they'll have a, a pro services account within here. So each fund has similar accounts, and we try to keep these little, what it's actually for, if it's for consultants, if it's for safety equipment, whatever it is, we try to keep those pretty consistent across funds, so you're not whi- which that doesn't sound like that big of a lift, but we historically.
Just create a new line item.
Create a new line item, but we have spent a lot of time making sure wherever Patterson's bringing money into, we try to create a revenue account that matches where he brings it into, and then we also try to make sure that these kind of stay similar across funds. So you could pull reports across funds that are all for, what do all of salaries and wages look like across funds? And that's pretty new for us to be at that level of reporting. So I'm gonna give you guys a lovely opportunity to run through all of these. Um, everything that's in here was based off of looking at two years prior expenses, accounting for any increases due to just inflation in the economy, but then areas where like retail food license fees, we know they were probably less, you know, before. So we have actually every single line item in here for you guys, I just didn't think you wanted me to read thousands of lines at you. To.
No.
Or we can.
Don't do that. I think what would be helpful to me is having a key.
Yes, we're gonna put it in there.
So we know what department we're looking at.
We're looking at right now, whoa, not department, but fund.
The funds we're looking at.
Cool.
Yep. I feel, I don't know what happened before the last two years, cause I just don't know what happened before then. I will say, I feel like this is one of the most accurate budgets we've had, I don't know, you've been here longer than I have. We. Spent a lot of time thinking of what we've done, what we expect, being real with ourselves about revenues.
So when we did our first quarter presentation, we really talked about what we wanted to happen for the rest of the budget of twenty twenty five and how to prepare. To enter into twenty twenty six. Um Candace, Will, Alicia, Karina, Ashley, they have put in so much time and energy. And it's really reflective of the numbers that we have to show you today. And we have an amazing team thinking really hard. Candace and Will met with every single department director and elected official over a really painful three week period. Not because it was painful, but the time obligation of over thirty hours to meet with everyone. And so that's what you're seeing today is really well thought out, really well prepared. And now we have two months to really.
Done again.
And for me, I've been here three years and we've never really been in this moment before. So I'm incredibly proud of the people that you have to work with and you should be really proud of the budget that you're gonna present to the people, like, can we?
We are already, yeah, can't wait to go over.
Well, I figure you're proud already, but like, you can like toot their horn.
I will say what's kind of nice to look at is that our twenty twenty five adopted budget with. All of the supplementals that have happened is pretty darn close to where this one is starting.
Yeah, that's awesome.
How do we most effectively tell the public this?
So let's talk.
Town Hall.
So let's talk about the critical mass. Um the critical mass of people that live in this county are going to understand.
Especially the critical ones.
The budget. You are gonna have a small portion of the county population that are always gonna be a challenge. And what we're doing is we are surveying the majority of folks, we are providing the information out there. We are providing instructive tools that are contextualized with the budget for them to interpret them. So we're gonna post this work session today, the line by line, the presentation and the recording. We're gonna give them an avenue for public comment. And then we're gonna do the town hall and the folks that are interested and show up and ask questions, great. And then the folks that are gonna choose. To not. Interpret the budget in the realm that we are presenting it, that is their choice. And we are not billing a county government based on their biased information.
Uh, uh, yeah.
A little bit. A little bit.
I mean, we're doing a lot of extra work, but it's way outside of what a lot of people do to provide extra context and extra information.
I guess I.
Because we, we do want to try to create clarity for people who.
Don't seem to grasp.
Yeah, but I also, at some, at some point, like you, you can do everything you can do and then you have to just. Realize you're not gonna make everybody happy.
It's hard, it's so hard for me, cause I'm sitting here and you're explaining it in ways that. You know, I don't know this stuff, but I can understand. And uh it's, I just wanna be able to point to this, like, hey, like, we've already answered these questions.
You will, cause you're gonna be able to point to this recording, we're not gonna record the town hall just cause the setup of the space, it just doesn't. We don't wanna.
Doesn't work good.
But we are gonna offer open invitations, um and we welcome it.
Yeah.
Andy, are you also asking like, what, like, can put this into a sentence? Years past, it has looked like this. Now we are doing it like this, this is the benefit, this is the change, the positive change that we're seeing. Kind of like the, the.
I wanna shut down the haters, I wanna be able to be like. We've explained this, you know, like, you, you keep wasting staff's time and you keep wasting taxpayer dollars. By barking up these same dead end streets that, you know, are not factual. And it's, it's frustrating for me because it's a distraction and it's continuous and it's just like always a thorn in my side. And. It's really hard for me because honestly, before I got in here, I sort of. Wasn't, uh. I didn't disagree with a lot of it, I was like, yeah, like, you really need to know more about why the county spends, you know? And now I do, and I'm like, there it is.
Say that. Say that.
Why would you have explained it to yourself before you got here? Cause I think you might have some of the best perspective.
That is like so many light years away, me. It's like, it feels like the trans, the, the distances I've traveled, I wanna try to figure out how to get that to other people. But they're not, they don't have a year in this seat, so how do I make that easily digestible for folks who. May have demonstrated histories, you know, and I'm not singling any one specific person out, you know, there's just, there's handfuls. Every community deals with this and every. Local government deals with this and we've seen with, you know, the proliferation of social media, how misinformation. Is just taints the whole well. And, you know, I'm just looking for ways to kinda, maybe if we could find a better way to nip that in the bud. Like the hard work you guys are doing is so impressive, I just really wanna shout it from the roof, rooftop and be able to. Let the community know instead of. Like every other community has a handful of people on social media who kinda. Have a bigger voice than, it feels like they have a bigger voice than we do.
They do.
Yeah, miss disinformation, um social networks, it's just really interesting, this confluence of it. And if I still was a social scientist doing research, this would be my area. I do just wanna mention, like, in the past, the budget hasn't been bad where the people working on it.
No, we just have bad data.
What's different is that we have stronger structures in place, we've given ourselves a longer runway. And that's really allowed us to look at our budget in a different lens. We also have a team working on the budget, previously we had one. We had one human, we had a budget analyst who was just. And she was doing a fantastic job, but the crow found lift. Running this machine should not be on the weight of one person, so we have structure, we have continuity and we have a team. And that is the passport to continue this, uh. Really positive momentum and how we work with our expenses and revenues in the county to really take care of the people who live here.
And start the plan. That, that's really the thing, once your data is better, once you have things kind of dialed, you can actually say, okay, now that we feel really confident and we're pretty spot on with budgets. It makes each budgeting, budgeting year easier. And then you can start to actually project out, okay, here's what we think revenues will do in the next five years, here's what we think we'll do expense wise and start to track. What you projected against what actually happens and continuously refine those projections. Clearly knowing that you, you can't count on everything, you couldn't count on COVID, you couldn't count on the. The funding losses we've had from the Fed and the state this year, but within reason, you can really like dial in certain things that are always gonna occur for you. And start to be able to pivot when things change because you have better data to be looking ahead with. And so that's really where we're. Trying to work from this point forward is work towards being a little less reactionary and more like we've, we've got a solid plan and. If, oh my gosh, we lost all of our grants, we actually have backup funds to like. Play with or plan with and make sure that we're set up to still operate, so.
Can I just put in a new line by line if you wanna?
Thank you. With the one with the. That one.
Thank you.
Um we'll have, I'm gonna have to actually do that in PDF it. Cause those are actual active links, gotta, 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 gotta. Cause this is good. I'm gonna show you this here so you can see. Wow, that was excessively large. Here we go, this is what I wanted you to have is this key.
Mm-hmm.
So, well, obviously I have Liz change it, cause that's an active link and we can't post that publicly, but. Um. This is where you can see what fund you're in, so that's our general fund, you can see our road and bridge fund, public health, department of human services. Grants, airport, so when you go look at those line by line, you can actually see like each department. That is in there. Or not department, sorry, fund, each fund that is in there. So then when you go up to actually like look at a, a line, you actually know which, which one you're looking at. So same, same issue report you had, but that one actually has a key for you. Oh, oh, sorry, Peter. Peter, I'm sorry, I just saw that, I didn't realize I wasn't sharing the line by line.
And Peter, we're gonna have all this available next week on the website and we're gonna do a hard push so everyone has access to it.
And I'll make sure we just, we have Peter's email, right?
We also have your email, we can send it to you.
Yeah, let's email Peter when we get done. So he has that.
So when we're looking at the budget?
Sorry, Peter.
Oh, there's a.
So like this afternoon, when we're looking at, um, the sheriff. Are you, is there going to be a separate document that we're looking at that just breaks out sheriff's expenses and revenues or we're just gonna be going to the budget?
Yeah, we're just gonna go to the budget and finding the line items. Um I will say he stayed with us, I told Elsa this this morning, he stayed with us till eight last night. Uh. Going line by line and making cuts, we also took some positions that he is hopeful to fill, but we don't fill. We do not know a hundred percent we can fill them, it'd take a while to recruit. And only, and people would have to go post to be able to fill them and only budgeted for those for half a year. Um knowing we probably won't fill them for the, for the full year. He worked with us to make tons of cuts, so his, if his area is your focus, it's pretty bare bones. Which we really appreciate him being open to sit down with us and, and do. And not, no, no one else.
Well, there's a massive.
Stuck with us and went through it like that.
It was a massive, uh, task that you were explaining to us yesterday that you needed to accomplish and I'm guessing that was a big help towards that.
It was huge.
So Elsa, what we wanna do with the next presentations of the day is just really go over goals, you've kind of had a top of a view of budget now, but. This is the work that informs the numbers, what we wanna do. So once we have a little bit more time to go through the numbers and they like them, that's when we're gonna start doing the dashboards. To be able to play and all that, we just. Did wanna do, wanna make sure this was as good as we could get it before we did these two, so we just didn't have to go back in a vicious cycle of like, ah, do it again, ah, do it again.
I think we also wanna make sure we, we are running here line by lines, so all of those lines.
Mm-hmm.
We've run by, run through looking at twenty five and twenty four against every line we budgeted and. Will and I really wanna run back through every single one of those again, I did it last night, but. Making sure we haven't missed anything or if we see a really big difference in a number, we're like, okay, what, what happened there last year? Did we miss something?
Mm-hmm.
You know, because we're, we're, we're running through every one of those lines you just saw.
Mm-hmm.
Making sure we don't miss anything and some of those things were items we were gifted by people who were here before us, so like knowing. What people did in the past or planned for in the past, well, it helps inform what we do. The actuals really inform a lot of what we do and help us really make sure we haven't missed anything or they highlight an IGA that we're like, whoa. Someone signed for this a long time ago, we should probably delve into that, we still have to budget for it, even if we end up leaving it in the future, so. We will continue doing that all the way up until December fifteenth to make sure that we have every single thing captured.
December eleventh.
December eleventh, sorry, it's definitely due by the fifteenth.
Yeah, that's the date.
So. Great, that's all, that's all I have for this morning.
Thank you, it's wonderful.
Hmm, it's impressive.
I can't wait to dive in. Um. Can I ask about this afternoon and tomorrow and this week?
So I just wanna mention, uh, this afternoon's work session is gonna be kind of a sandwich. We're gonna have the sheriff's office present, we're gonna have the treasurer's office present. And then, um, Assessor Walsworth is out of town, we're gonna give him a little break, he's been working. Um, the clerk of records office. Declined to engage at this moment and then after that, we will have, um. The T D S office come and chat.
Yep.
So there will be a gap today.
We invited peo- people, but if they're not here, are not joining us, we. We have those gaps there.
Mm-hmm.
Um. So, I'm sorry, in the packet, there's nothing for those folks.
What do you mean? Their presentations are in there.
They are not.
Okay, so.
So we can.
I know the elected offices is in there, cause I checked it this morning. At the one P M.
Sorry, I was going here and then checking the packet here and it has administration, community development, elected offices.
So is that, that's this morning, so those are the memos. Let me, let me, can I see what you're all seeing?
It's the memos.
Yep, and so in the packet, you also have the Q three memos, oh, yes. So those, um, we haven't quite collected all of those yet, that was one of the first project I passed off to Sarah Bushman, who's the E A.
Yes, Kristen.
For Candace, she is on one, so some people sent memos to Sarah.
Yep.
That's why those memo packets are empty, but that's the Q three memo that is the outline of the goals from the budget book. And then it has a reflection on Q one, two, three, and their twenty twenty six prelim, so those should be in there shortly. So you're right, those are missing.
Okay.
But if you go to one P M.
Yeah.
Gotta go back one more breadcrumb.
No, it's on ten twenty, it's on. Ten eight.
Mm-hmm. That's fascinating.
Yep.
Can you see it on yours?
I could, a couple hours ago. Uh. Thanks for pointing that out, we'll see what's taken and we will get it fixed.
Okay.
Um.
Alright, do we wanna do anything else at this time for this meeting or should we wrap this up and then we'll have Liz work on?
No, that's great. Um, I have a proposal for this afternoon.
Yeah.
Um, can we?
Why is it gone, guys?
Pause, like, can I pause the recording between each of the presentations? So that as people get on, on YouTube, they can actually click directly to the department or area they wanna listen to.
Yeah.
That'd be awesome. And where people don't have to like scroll through a four hour thing to find.
Well, so.
What they care about.
Right, and they're also bookmarked, so when they do review it on YouTube, they catch up.
Yeah, I just think it'd be a little easier to actually break it up.
Uh, you are right, the one P M work session was.
Yes.
Was in there this morning. But don't worry, cause I have files, so they'll just loop it right over.
Thank you.
I wonder if, did you, were working on one P M?
Ha, I'm, I'm actually gonna go on the backend and see. So we deleted it, then just resurrect it.
Can you double check the chat? Candace will release. Oh, that's just, yeah, okay, great.
Good, okay, perfect, thank you. Alright.
Wanna end us, Andy?
Oh, sure. It's, uh, ten thirty three, we will conclude this work session, the Lake County Board of County Commissioners, thank you, staff.
Thank you.